Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health, being held at Townhouse Auditorium, February 20th, 2024, 6:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We are recording the meeting. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Just out in there?
No.
Okay, seeing none? Do we have any minutes?
I actually do have a set of minutes. I put it in your folder. I didn't get it on the agenda in time. I don't know if that's okay.
Sure. I'll give you a paper presumption. Okay, this is the minutes of February 12th, 2024.
Last week.
Athlete.
I just have to catch up with the exact sessions. That's it.
I just signed it. You approved a bunch of minutes. Signed the contract for a new town administrator. It'll be starting March 11th as a start date. Discuss the turkey shoot. Budget review. And there will be zero walnuts. Sign that. And leave. Key banquet waiver. Cable license. We're going to set a date for that one of these days. And new town administrator selecting. Any further discussion?
All in favor?
The first item. We're going to do some budget meetings tonight. The first item is our building department with the building commissioner. Please come forward.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. I heard that. I missed that last part. Yes, always. Thank you.
Oh, look at those.
Pretty much the same thing as last year with no changes. As we don't have any COLA guidance and the rest of my budget is basically paper envelopes, gasoline.
I know that other departments have talked about certain members have step increases based on years of service.
Right.
Did you just predict to see if Lauren?
Well, see, that's why I kind of had brought it up with you guys when I wrote that on. I've only received COLA for the last, since Collins came to town because immediately I was maxed out or whatever after only working, I believe, at that point, six years here. In that time, I've got my commissionership. I've taken on the designated agent role. But I just wanted to run it by you guys and say, does that seem like a fair equation for you? I noticed when you were interviewing some of the TA applicants, you used a question similar to that. Whereas if you have an employee and they've kind of aged out or maxed out, what do you do? And I thought that was a great question. So that's why I'm kind of asking you, what do you do? What do I do? Other than, other than love my job, which, you know, I do. That's why I'm not like a disgruntled worker. But the cost of living increases we have been getting, I don't know if they've been keeping up with my cost of living. And I don't live real high.
We don't know what the advisory committee is recommending for COLA.
No, we don't. Last year was four, correct?
Yeah, and when I had seen other department heads who have contracts, speak to you guys, and they were involved in a contract and they were like, kind of, you could readdress that with them. I thought perhaps that maybe we could come with a strategy or something for myself where it's just, you know, I'm not looking to profit share. I'm just looking to try to, after three and a half or four years of the, living under the Collins report, I didn't realize when I negotiated such a great starting rate that it was going to bite me four years down the line. Five years? So that's why I thought I'd bring it up. But other than that, everything else is all level funded as requested.
Right. Were you saying that you haven't had a step bump in the last few, three or four years?
Not since the Collin report.
Are you maxed out with steps?
Oh, yeah. Well, and honestly.
It says seven five. It's not maxed out.
Well, no, the next one would be seven six, but it still is, if you look at the chart, still not even on the chart.
There's no six on the chart?
No. When Collins came to town, I thought that what the impetus was, you would take somebody and put them at the closest step or grade and work from there.
Let's see. Eight is forty-six, forty-eight.
I don't see.
Why can't he go here?
I guess we have to jump up to eleven.
Wait, grade six, and then the step raises goes to step twelve.
Says five, but to me, if you look at the current rate, it's more in line with a eleven.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. But I think that's where the things were. When you put the COLA in, that makes the rate. If you don't shift the thing at the same time with the COLA numbers, these are not going to be, keep up the same thing. Right. If you didn't put these up four percent, they're totally out of line.
Right. And I mean, I have another one here from the treasurer. I think he was just using as a hypothetical, but it has me working here eleven years and still not being, you know, I must have negotiated really well when I started because I just felt like I was just trying to get a living wage. But again, I don't know what the strategy is. You guys are my bosses.
I'd like to see that spreadsheet adjusted for the COLAs we've done. That's a task, I think, for Brian when he comes on.
It'd be a good.
Because like I say, with this, again, if we don't bring this up to date, the COLAs we throw in.
It's going to be obsolete in ten years. Completely obsolete.
Probably in a year.
Like I said, I'm sitting there going somehow, when I started, I didn't realize and I just was like, what if, I intend to work here for a few more years.
Not everybody gets a step every year.
Right.
It's every other year. Usually, everybody will get the step and the COLA. But everybody gets the COLA generally every year.
That's right. And that's why I think, you know, that chart thing, you should talk to Dick about that, the chart.
What did Dick give you?
So this was the original Collins and Company one, but then in the budget preparation this year, Dick had forwarded that to me. And I'm like, and even in that one, I'm still not on this chart.
Right, because the chart's not up to date. Yeah, so he says he should be going up to six, which we kind of agree to. Yeah, especially if you didn't change from five last year. That'd be two-year thing. If the chart hasn't been adjusted and the four percent got added in, the chart never gets updated, these are always going to be way off. Right.
So the chart needs to be updated for the past?
Oh, yes.
Four years?
Probably. You know, should have been working.
I didn't think that when this happened, we thought it was going to be a living document and had to keep upgrading it like that also.
Well, I mean, it should be.
In fairness to you guys.
When it starts, I mean, it started at whatever rate percentages were actual factual at that time.
Right.
You know, five years later, four years later, four percent COLA, four percent COLA.
Every number.
That's why I'm asking for your.
Every number should be incrementally changing.
That's why I'm asking for your guidance because I really, like I said, I'm not a disgruntled employee by any means.
I don't think we can give you that guidance yet without knowing what the.
Exactly. But if I don't, if I don't bring it to your attention, then if you don't ask, you don't get.
Correct. So I think it's a valid request.
Yeah, because the biggest problem is going to be, he should be going through a seven-six, fair enough. But we have no idea what that seven-six is because the chart thing has never been updated. That's the problem. But in terms of your general budget, besides that, there are no changes?
No. No. And we're plugging right along. In fact, I was looking at.
Does Karen get a step?
Karen gets a step and a COLA this year. But in 2014, the year before I started, we only had about 130 permits. And now we are up to like 300. Before COVID was probably 220. Post-COVID, we still haven't slowed down. And I mean, 290-something in the last year. That's crazy.
How many new, how many building permits are out? I mean, new building permits. I know you have Chapin Road.
New construction, yeah, mostly on Chapin Road. There's a couple of private ones that are just waiting to get off. A lot of times what I do is ask Jane, like, how many perks has she seen? Because that gives you kind of an indication of who's developing.
Sure.
And there's still a lot, again, there's still a lot of open property and there's a lot of perks.
And Thresher's not saying yet, right?
Nope. I don't know what's happening there. I saw it on the market. But again, you know.
I thought they were still discussing the common driveway.
I don't know if that's gone through with the planning or not, but I know I saw it on the market and people have called me about that piece of property. But again, there's, that's the thing about Hampton is there's still a lot of open property. And it's getting, I guess, more worthwhile for people to, houses have almost doubled in cost. It's crazy. And that's when it becomes worthwhile to do the engineering for the crazy driveways, the swamp crossing, the stream crossing, whatever you have to go through, you know.
Any swamp land near you done?
They've been calling about your backyard too.
I was thinking of putting the high-rise up there.
That'd be great.
The piling.
Solar.
You just need a helicopter pad and you'll be able to get out there no problem. But other than that, we're in good shape.
Sounds like we need to do some research on this.
Products and these, everything there are all in a good spot right now?
Yes.
You increased them last year.
Yeah, and really no issues with that. The biggest increase was just the residential solar. I was just talking to somebody the other day and I was like, you know, we, we get a lot of feedback because of the solar farms. Crazy, right? But then I look around at all the residential solar that we've done in the last nine years since I've been here. And you basically are making neighborhoods little solar farms. You know, the people want solar now because the electrical prices are going kind of through the roof. I don't know if it's by design. If you were a conspiracy theorist, you'd be like. But it really is. There's a hard push on solar. And we're doing a couple solar a week still, you know.
I have their new shirt, by the way.
The one that says Commissioner.
Exactly.
Well, we'll see how the raise goes.
Get him the tape.
Just a comment. The building inspection fees in the course of the year almost covers pay. So in terms of what we pay, whether it's right or wrong, I'm not taking half sides.
Right.
But the revenue that comes in from the building fees. I believe is name.
I think next to Becky, I'm his best, her favorite department. But he loves Becky, so there's no fighting that. But the building department.
He's a senior. All right, thank you, Wendell.
Thanks.
Fire department, fire department.
Everybody's got these shirts on, but what's up with that?
The California. Chief.
Chief.
Chairman.
Gentlemen?
What do you got?
Did you receive our?
We did. We did.
So it's mostly salary things. I'm not sure.
Yeah, the first line there, the twenty-four, eighty, the thirty-seven, thirty-two, that's the overtime pay?
Yes.
That'd be, that's all.
Thirty-seven overtime.
Yes.
Which line is here?
And we don't have a COLA for them either.
Normal rate, overtime rate?
Yeah, I just wondered if that, that's what that is.
Yeah, so it's the fourteen thousand dollars. There was always ten thousand dollars accounted for like holidays, vacations, and when they go on training so we can fill that space so we can stay at a, at a three-person firefighter shift. So that's only like going up four thousand, not fourteen thousand. That's an additional four thousand because we did the math and we're a little short over the years and raises and handbook changes and stuff like that.
That was ten thousand before, right?
Correct.
What is EMSQA?
That is, EMSQA is quality insurance. It's something we have to do by the state to stay our, to stay at our BLS certification. That was done by Matt Sterling for years for free. And then when he left, the deputy took it over. And he was filling in, how we had that open third spot per diem, he was filling in and being able to take care of all that work while he was on shift. So I would like to appoint it to someone else and have a item that they, it's figured at twenty-five dollars an hour for four hours a week. That would include the Q and A for them. And also, we have to do quarterly trainings and such to keep our certification for our BLS and other trainings as well that we could get credit for.
But really, it should have been a wide item before.
Yeah, yeah.
You're fortunate to have somebody do it inside there.
Yeah, that's what happens. I mean, free is great, but when we lose that, I have to adjust for somewhere and it holds accountable too for, for that position.
Are you, see the blank on the clerk part? Is that just because you're waiting for the number from the advisory?
Yeah, so when. Jean.
Hour change or no?
That'd be great, but I had to fight for the fifteen. I think. I'd love to have more hours, but it's, we'll do what we can do. I was, really, this was for, when she was hired, Bob Markle said, you know, qualifications are great. She's doing a great job. You can always go back for a grade review. So that's what this is about. It's just, you know, she does an excellent job. I don't think she's paid enough, basically. And I'd like someone to review her grade.
Well, we scheduled that for other departments. Simple. Is this going to be similar? Do you think, Don, to what we just went through with Clark? Sure, this is more of a full-time position. It should come back to HR aspect of it, you know.
Well, if it goes to twenty hours, it gets.
No, I mean, not just that, but I mean, again, for the grade review, should that start with Brian and then kick to Austin?
Yeah. I think so.
And then the call, the call of reimbursement, okay? Did you, we talked a couple of times about you're going to double that or they're going to, minimum hours is going to be?
Yes, so it's a, this is based on, the new figure is based on a two-hour minimum call. So if you came in for something that's, I hate to use this, housing for the elderly, if we had a smoke alarm, it was just, you know, okay, someone set the alarm off. Everything's okay. Checks out okay. It takes less than an hour, but it's hard to get people either stop what they're doing or, or wake up, you know, and get out of bed on a cold night to come down. It's just a little bit more incentive and something tried to also help, you know, keep the people that we have interested and.
What do they get an hour now?
Twenty dollars an hour. And this, this increase would also bump them up to twenty-five dollars an hour. Because they, they haven't gotten any raise since 2017.
Now, that's your budget amount though. But I mean, what's your expenditure been in the past couple of years? Out of the money appropriate, you typically return some or?
Yeah, last year we spent twenty thousand. So if we did the raise and the two-hour minimum callback, it would be, we'd be short of just about ten thousand dollars. And we also pay right now the overtime out of the, for the three full times come out, come us out of that too. So that'd be another six thousand dollars that we pay usually.
By sure, you should be doing, by sure, you mean from what you were appropriate last year?
No, well, so if.
On that call level?
Based on the next fiscal year, if we did the raise, based on the call level that we've been seeing. And the overtime pay that we've been occurring from full-time people, whether or not they're held over.
So the sixty-five thousand will cover it?
Yeah.
That's almost a double then. You're saying you expended thirty thousand.
Yeah.
And you need to go sixty-five because you anticipate that thirty would have doubled with the call time plus the raise?
Yes.
So if we had more call time, you'd be very short. I mean, you're.
Yeah, I mean, our calls have been going, like Kobe says, since, since COVID, our calls have gone up, you know? We're well over six hundred now. But it's, it's more importantly trying to really hold on to people we have. We have great people. We want to keep them motivated and keep, everybody, we have a lot, we have high turnover, whether it's they're getting hired, which is great from other fire departments. But when they do that, they generally have to move closer to that department. Or, or life takes me a different direction. If they're young and they're a family, they're going to school or something, then they, you know, eventually move out of the area and they're no longer, you know, able to respond in a timely manner. So it's important to hold on to the people we have, the older, you know, people that are, you know, situated in town, that are residents, helping us out now. I mean, that's where we, you know, we think it would be.
What's the word on the truck?
I do not have a delivery date, but to last I knew, I think it was ten to eleven months out.
From the time I went through.
About the generator, my favorite topic.
The generator, I was waiting to hear something from either the town administrator or select board on, I don't know. I know Hall Engineering was hired. I've not been contacted by anyone asking any questions or been told that here's a drawing or, or anything. So I don't.
Looks good sitting behind there. I think we can all see it. We park our cars right now, so we need to verify that Hall is on board doing their work to start, right? Do we know that Hall has been contacted and told, go ahead?
The last I knew, the building department was handling it. I was out of the equation.
Okay, I don't want to get into a.
Yeah, he said, she said.
We need to sit down together and make sure we can all just make it happen.
You guys cleared this up, I think, at a meeting because we didn't have the authority to sign the agreement.
Right, and Bob did.
And Bob did. So you guys came at a meeting and agreed that Bob would sign it.
We have to call Hall Engineering and find out where the hell they are.
Bob has to find out what happened.
We'll get that done. Okay. Let's verify Bob sent it to Hall and you know they're on the job.
And if Hobie, if he's willing to handle it with me, we'll, we'll chase it out.
That's easy enough.
Great.
Again, it's one that we can catch Bob now because he's a state man.
They're not going to do anything. It's just going to be Karen and Jean doing all the work anyhow.
It's a good thing now Lauren's got her certificate. The, the other issue is the RFQ, right? There's a funding, we got a funding issue there. Are you going to make a warrant, article for the town meeting for that?
The building committee has been meeting a couple of times, as Craig knows. I, I thought the funding was already settled.
I pulled that from, said we were going to use ARPA funds for that.
Well, I looked back at the minutes of the meeting, the meeting we talked about. And we did talk about it, but then we told them that we'd have to go to town meeting. I've got a copy here, I think.
Well, I thought we're kind of waiting for the number. Do we have a number yet?
Well, I thought when Mark came in, he proposed up to fifty thousand dollars. And I thought we had said, why don't we use ARPA funding for that?
Yeah, I think that's right. We need to make it formal.
Well, we, but then at the next meeting, when we approved the thing, we, we brought the same study that there was no funding for it. So I mean, my view is we should go to town meeting for the money rather than use ARPA because we need ARPA for the water thing.
The one that is going to blow our debt out of the water.
Yeah, right.
And then also to give the town a chance to decide whether they want to do it.
Can I suggest, let's get an update, maybe invite the building committee to one of our meetings and put it to bed then. You know, either the next one or the one after.
Fair enough.
Bring all these committees in for the first day. Brian's here. He might change his mind. No?
I've been setting, I've been setting him the agendas. I haven't heard from him as a response.
So Bob was supposed to look into more funding sources for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
According to the minutes.
Yeah. And then in the next meeting, I think you were, you were sick that day, but you were on Zoom and John and I discussed it. And John said, we still have to decide on funding. So that's kind of where we are.
I don't remember why. I thought we had voted on it, but I guess maybe it was just a suggestion and we didn't do it.
I think we talked about it.
Well, we could lock it in. Like I say, bring the committee in, find out where we are. Now, you guys have met a few times. Got a good sense. Here's an update.
Yeah, I can just give you a quick, brief overview of it. The committee met. Just real quick, the committee met, they looked at the RFQ, said, okay. There's only one. Then they were going to work with Bob on the next step.
So. Back to your, your budget here.
So this doesn't reflect any, any COLA?
I mean, numbers of calls or stuff like that? We estimate off last year's calls.
So this reflects a four percent?
No, the COLA was.
It reflects last year's figure.
It reflects last year's figure. The COLA was not added into it because Dick didn't have the number yet. So those numbers would have to be adjusted to reflect that.
Right.
Right. Anything else?
Do you know when the finance committee is meeting? Or is that agenda that it's set up yet or?
I think they had reached out. I know they set up Becky for March. Next week and then somebody's March you.
I can tell you.
I'm on March four.
March four.
Hello, how are you? Good. You all have a coffee?
Yes.
Great. So the salary portion, the top portion, no COLA adjustment is in there yet because the COLA wasn't available. So once that's available, I'll recalculate that and provide you a revised copy. Two positions this year were eligible for a step. And so the step is calculated in there in the director line and the receptionist line. So the step is there, but not COLA. There's no additional request for any hours or everything. So we're all a level service. When you go down into the second section, it's expenses, utilities and building maintenance. I added a five percent increase into those line items just because we've seen a pretty good size increase in our building maintenance supply costs as well as our utilities. And some of our, you know, office expense, everything just seems to be going up and I don't see it going down anytime soon. So I did put a five percent increase in there. That's, that's, that's our budget. The grants that we applied for are listed down there at the bottom for you. The Title III B grant that we get from Greater Springfield Senior Services pays a portion of the outreach coordinator's salary. That brings that line up to full-time. Then the formula grant that comes from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs at the state level is listed there. And that covers the salary for the program coordinator who does not receive any funding from the town. And that also pays for some conference fees that staff and I attend annually. And then the final thing that we're doing that brings in a little bit of money, it's not a lot at all, but we are a DTA connect outreach partner. So that means that we are connected to the Department of Transitional Assistance to do online food stamp or SNAP applications. And so based on, it's a crazy calculation that they do, but we do get anywhere between two and four hundred dollars a quarter. That comes back to the senior center. We then use that for a program that we have for personal needs bags. So people who are eligible for the SNAP program aren't able to buy non-food items with their SNAP benefit. So we've been supplying them with items like toilet paper and paper towels and dish soap and laundry detergent and things like that on a monthly basis. So we're using that money that we get to go back really into the SNAP program within, within the building.
None of the problems at the state this year are affecting your grants like in prior years?
Correct. Correct. No, the nine C cuts didn't affect the formula grant at all. It affected earmarks, but we didn't have one.
I mean, a survey on a daily basis.
So I would say that we see anywhere between seventy-five and a hundred and twenty-five.
Valentine's Day was a big deal.
That was a big deal. Yeah, yeah, we had a hundred and twenty for lunch that day. Yep, plus other activities going on at the same time. So it was a full house. Yeah, it was really good, though.
Did you enjoy it?
I didn't go. My Valentine.
You qualify.
I qualify by a lot. My Valentine had other plans.
I see.
Expensive plans, two dollar meal.
That's true.
A fundraiser for a pie, you can get that now.
Any questions? Great. All right, thank you so much. Oh, okay, right.
Schedule, senior city, senior senior center building committee presentation.
Here and present. We are. As you know, approximately a year and a half ago, you appointed us as a committee, most of whom are here tonight, to look at the needs for the senior center for the next twenty-five to fifty years. So we've spent the last year and a half, meeting twice a month, to come up with a list of needs, which basically, some of the major ones was a need for more storage capacity throughout the building, a need to expand the kitchen, a need for private offices and conference areas when people come in for a confidential chat. And then looking forward to the need for additional program space for the next twenty-five to fifty years. So we have contracted, as you know, with EDM. And they have presented us with four drawings, four options. We consolidated those down to two, further discussed and modified them and came down to one, which we're presenting tonight. We have Chris Want from the EDM design firm that's here to talk about that design.
So thanks for having me, guys. Appreciate it. I'm going to share my screen here and just kind of walk through the stuff that we've been discussing at the building committee level. Let me just see if I can get this to work. There we go. So I'll try to keep it fairly brief and we can always jump back and you guys can ask questions on whatever you're most interested in. But this is the existing center. And it's laid out by square footage and oriented to the front door, towards the bottom of the page. And this is just to, like I said, orient all of us as to what the current situation is and what we're dealing with. I wanted to start by just listing off a few items that we talked about at the beginning of the project as far as what the issues are at the current senior center. Lack of rooms that accommodate multiple uses that cause scheduling issues and cancellations and delays in programs, which leads to spaces that are currently in the building not being used as its intended function. So art rooms being used as computer classrooms and janitor's closets being used as nurses and wellness spaces. Lack of storage in the building, which creates clutter and takes up actual program space, like chairs and tables sitting in the great room and whatnot. Restroom privacy issues, you can see right into the restrooms from main corridors. Non-ADA compliant restrooms, specifically single-use restrooms that make it difficult for, you know, seniors that need assistance to be able to use. And just currently with the lack of space, the idea, as Don pointed out, there's not a ton of future growth opportunities within the facility. So those are kind of the major parameters that we were working under. We started with this list on the left here that came from the building committee. They had met for over a year, discussing, deliberating, talking about different spaces that they need, spaces that they had. We had this document to the right that we had created about three years ago now, was the end of 2020. We did an overall feasibility study on what the current situation is in the center. And we put these things side by side and they aligned pretty well. So basically, what we had found in our study three years ago, what the building committee had reviewed over the past year, there was a lot of symmetry there. So those were, those were the points as to where we started and started to build the floor plan that we're going to show you here. So this is the, this is the new floor plan. I'll try to zoom in as best I can as I go through it. But very, very quickly, the red dotted line gives you guys a sense of what the existing footprint of the building is currently. And there's a little diagram up here to the right that, again, in the white, surrounded by the big bold red line, shows the existing footprint. And the little red areas to the top and the bottom right part of the plan, those are the expansion areas. So again, just to orient us as to what we're talking about here. So I'll walk through the building, but for the most part, the only areas of the building that are untouched, and we tried to study this as much as possible, you know, renovating the whole building, expanding parts of the building and leaving parts of the building. You know, we studied, as Don said, a bunch of different options. This was one option that we drilled down into a little bit further. So this is the third option within the original four options. So we went around and around a lot and, you know, studied this fairly in depth. But this is where we landed was renovating about seventy percent of the building to accept this expansion that we're talking about. So the existing square footage of the building is about seven thousand square feet. We're just a touch under seven thousand square feet. We're sitting at a little over twelve and a half thousand square feet at this point with this proposed addition and renovation. So just to walk through the space really quick, the front of the building was one of the things that we wanted to address. And the point of arrival, right now you walk in, you hit the reception desk and you just right into the corridor. There's not a lot of lounge space. There's not a lot of opportunity for, you know, that point of arrival. So what we did here was we moved the vestibule to orient that entry a little bit better, create some soft seating areas. We introduced a little cafe that you can get a coffee or some baked goods, some fruit. We consolidated all the office spaces here to the front of the building, mainly again to have the reception close to the entry, the director's office close to the entry, adjacent to the reception area with good visibility out to the parking lot for safety and security. And then just surrounded by other office spaces that will be used in its current state and as for future use for future staff. We added some single-use restrooms with a nurse's suite with a shower. Since this building is a heating and cooling center, we wanted the ability to be able to allow folks to shower here if there is an emergency or seniors that, you know, do have issues once in a while to have a shower in the facility to be able to use in case there is an emergency. So zooming around here, back onto the front, the great room more or less stays the way it is currently. We reshaped some of the storage areas, but the kitchen gets expanded just a little bit to accommodate some of the additional uses within the kitchen. And more storage space is added on to the existing storage off the back end of the building. Working our way around, we reconfigured the whole core center part of this building. Like I said, the existing restrooms aren't ADA compliant currently. And with the expansion, we don't have the correct number of toilet facilities in this building. And toilet facilities in the senior center are one of the most important parts of the senior center. You know, we all want to worry about the crafts rooms and the program spaces, but restrooms are actually really, really critical for this facility. So we added fixtures, we oriented them correctly in the building, recreated ADA accessible spaces within those units. So those bathrooms are now a decent size bigger than what they currently are. A relocated crafts room, it's more or less the same size and use as the current crafts room. It's just this one will be more or less dedicated to arts and crafts with correct storage and millwork. We have a little gift shop. Right now, the gift shop is just at the main entry in the hallway when folks want to, you know, sell their arts and crafts or if there's a Christmas sale or whatnot. That's currently in the corridor, so we created a little space for a year-round type of boutique. Created another lounge, more private lounge in the rear, which mimics the current library. Current library right now gets split a lot of the time between different functions because it's one of the only spaces that can be used for multiple functions. So it's supposed to be used for a library, but it gets used for card games and it gets swallowed up by a lot of other programs. So we wanted to find another home for that with bookshelves and fireplace, something a little bit more cozy. Billiards room gets transplanted towards the back of the building, again, similar use, similar type space. And then the two spaces on the right here, these are the additional multipurpose spaces that we added. So we have this large multipurpose space, which we call the great room. But we wanted to create two more different sized multipurpose spaces for different activities. So multipurpose room two could be used as a classroom, could be used as a small meeting room, could be used as a conference room for the staff. And then multipurpose room one could be used for memory care, could be used for exercise, fitness type of activities. So just general use, but varying of sizes and flexible uses within these different spaces. So we essentially have a small, medium and large multipurpose spaces within the facility, which gives a ton of flexibility of the types of uses in the space. So that's a very, very brief overview of the plan and how we laid things out. In senior center design, we specifically, you know, us with the help of Lifespan Design Studio, who's also part of the team, they're the senior center consultant on the project. They've done hundreds of senior centers across the entire country. They, we like to design the senior centers in such a way where the traffic around the senior center is very easy to understand. So here you walk in, we create this loop around the facility, so there's no dead-end corridors, it's hard to get lost. It's easy to orient yourself and find different spaces. And even if you do happen to pass the space that you want to, you know, visit, you just continue on around the track and you will end up eventually where you need to go. The only areas that we kind of created a private little area was the office area here, which is off to the right, which is a, you know, has a good reason for separate space. So I'll try to breeze through this quickly, the rest of this stuff. But this is just a site plan showing where the existing buildable area is based on all the setbacks and the wetlands and whatnot. So we stayed within that area. You can see the wetlands area delineated here, the dotted green lines, the tree line here in the green. So this just kind of shows you where this addition will fit on the site and how it lays out in relation to the parking and the other amenities. This building will need a sprinkler system, which will require a pump and probably a tank that will go with it. So we'll have to accommodate those on the property as well. And we're in the preliminary stages of designing that and locating that on the site here. But the idea is to try to hide that as best as possible. And then just some massing studies and what this thing might look like. You can see here, this is the existing center right here. And the idea is the addition will just blend into the existing architecture and the existing neighborhood. We're not trying to, you know, overwhelm anybody with the design of this thing. So here's just some, you know, pre-pictures as to what this thing could potentially look like. It has a lot of the same flavor, a lot of the same design aesthetic as the existing building, just only enhanced a little bit, a little bit more for what we're trying to accomplish with the space inside. So this is the front of the building, new entry, covered entry, slide, automatic sliding doors. And then this right part of the elevation here is the addition. Zooming around the back, most of this is addition here, but just extending on the existing structure, trying to leave as much of the structure and the foundation as possible to save costs. So we are very deliberate about how we laid these pieces and parts out. And then the moment of truth for the cost, this is a preliminary exercise as to what we think this thing could potentially cost. So we hired a third-party construction partner that does this all day, every day. They provide construction estimates and they gave us, based on this early preliminary design, a construction estimate of about, just a shade under five million dollars. That is what we call hard costs for a total project cost. There's these things called soft costs underneath it. So we have the building that we're going to construct. And then we have these other little fees. We have design fees, we have moving fees, we have furnitures and fixtures, we have audiovisual equipment. We have owner's project reps, you know, surveys, there's a bunch of other pieces and parts that need to be added to that construction cost to give you folks the project costs, which you need to understand. The construction cost isn't really as important as the project cost. So this was our thought as to what we think that this overall thing could cost. Like I said, we have the hard cost here, furnitures, fixtures and equipment, which is what we call FFNE, could be about three hundred thousand, fees and expenses could be upwards of six hundred thousand. And then we just threw in some contingencies down here, which at this early stage is always smart to have some contingency because you just don't know what's going to happen with the project or how this project evolves. So there is a little bit here. And there's also some, just so you guys know, in this construction number, there is a design contingency in there because we just haven't designed this building. We have a floor plan, but the cost estimators don't know what the HVAC systems are, what the exact structural systems are, what the new electrical system is, do we need to upgrade the generator? There's a lot of little things that we just haven't vetted at this point. So there is definitely some fluff in that number. And it's escalated to the beginning of twenty twenty-four, we estimated, so twenty twenty-five, sorry. If this whole thing goes through and everything, you know, gets voted on and we start designing as quickly as we can and we get this thing on the street, the earliest we could do it is the beginning of twenty twenty-five. So we escalated it to that point, just to make an assumption. We had to assume something, so that's what we assumed. So that's the quick little spiel. Hopefully I didn't talk for too long. I'll turn it back over to Don and he's very happy to answer any questions.
Quick question about the sprinklers.
Sure.
About the storage tank on premise.
I think it was fifty thousand gallons, if I remember correctly.
So there'd be no issue with the shared well?
No.
Storage tank. I would obviously want to store it, store it.
Right, it's right, exactly. It's kind of a one-shot thing. We fill it up and it would just kind of sit there and hopefully never get used.
Right.
Where do you think of that?
Where?
Yeah.
We are thinking, if you look at the site plan, so right now, towards the east side of the site, here is the septic system.
Like where the shed is.
There's a shed here in this X. We're thinking there, so there needs to be another little shed next to it that holds the pump. It's got to be a fiery-toed building because it has to be protected pretty severely. So there's probably going to be two little sheds or two little buildings. Maybe we can add to it and make it look like one building. Again, haven't gotten that far, but we think the tank would be behind those structures. So you don't really know it's there. You'll see these two little sheds and they'll just look like sheds and then the thing behind it will just kind of disappear.
The exposed tank or is that in the shed too?
We're thinking for cost, an above-ground tank is probably the best solution. Because if it goes underground, the pump has to get bigger, the tank has to get bigger, the piping has to get bigger, everything gets a little bit more complicated. So we're trying, we're trying to be as efficient as we can, thinking it's above ground. And we think we have a good place to hide it.
I'm going down rabbit hole. What causes that not to freeze?
I'm sorry?
What causes it not to freeze?
Oh, the tank is super insulated. We won't have to worry about it freezing. They do that all, they put above-ground tanks like that all the time.
So let me ask you this. When the town approves that construction starts, what do you do with your present programs while they're tearing walls down?
Yeah, so we've talked about that. And we would certainly want to talk to the construction teams and figure out, you know, is there a way that we can still do anything, you know, in the great room side, you know, at least provide lunch and our nutrition programs, work around that a little bit? We do understand that there could be a period of shutdown. We had to shut down back in two thousand and five when the senior center closed and we had great neighbors in Bethlehem Church. They allowed us to have our meal site there. We brought programs over here to the town hall. So I think we would work to, you know, move things around as good as we could within the town and within town buildings and with our friends who have large church spaces right near us that we would ask for some favors.
I'm thinking of Thornton Burgess. There's a lot of space, there are a lot of rooms, cafeteria, there's a cafeteria, there's a kitchen there. I was thinking if you have to close down for a period of time.
Or Thornton Burgess. I mean, that would be great if we could stay within one, you know, keep our staff together and stay under one roof. And like you said, there's a kitchen there and, I mean, that would, that would be ideal if it was able to be utilized at that point.
I could see the Don Downport annex.
Great. Wonderful. It costs three million dollars for that.
Have to write the check for.
Exactly, yeah.
I was just wondering, you know, because there's going to be concerns to be different. than keep your programs going.
Yeah.
But we wanted to come and bring you up to date. Our charge, this is where we're staying right now. And we're looking for your support as we go, prepare to go before the town.
We have everything ready before town meeting? All the ducks are all before?
Bob had a placeholder on the warrant for it.
Right. Everything's going to be ready.
Yeah. The, the information, the documents, the images, it's all ready. I think we have a little bit of legwork to do just to compile how we want to present it and what it's going to look like. It'll probably be a little bit of a different format from when we get in front of the whole town. But all the pieces and parts are here, ready to be put together for that discussion.
If it starts in, well, early 2025, how long a construction period do you think it is?
Well, it depends on if we try to phase construction and keep some of Becky's programs functioning, or if we just get them out of there and hit the ground running. But it could be between 12 to 15 months is kind of what we're seeing. Maybe a little bit longer if we try to phase it a little bit crazier. But that's all part of our program.
Yeah. There is one little piece that we would, obviously, we're asking for your support. But at our last committee meeting, under the contract for EDM, phase one is basically complete. And the way that the contract is written up, phase two is at the discretion of the selectmen based upon the recommendations, if you will, of, of the senior center building committee. At our last meeting, the, the committee voted basically unanimously to recommend that EDM move forward and let us put a phase two together and get it to them so they can have a number ready for town meeting as in the springtime. So like I say, I don't want Don to speak. Basically, the committee's happy with EDM's work progress and where they are. As you can see tonight, they put a lot of work in. Quite frankly, the committee gave them a lot of good information to move forward. But that, they've done a good job. They have a couple more meetings that they're going to help us with for public participation. But basically, the phase one is done. And like I say, we, we recommend that we be allowed to put a phase two together for them to give us a final proposal.
You said basically unanimously?
I'm sorry?
You said basically unanimously?
It was unanimous.
It was. I was in the room, so they had to vote for me.
Want to hurt your feelings?
Was phase two still covered underneath what the town allotted for the funding?
No. No. We would be, it would be a new number, if you will, in front of the town.
So the-
It's, it's included, if you will, as part of, it's in that, it's in that number.
The, the idea is that from this point forward, everything that is related to this project, like I said, moving, insurance, anything that's kind of ancillary expenses would be within this allotted number. That's why there's an estimate and there's soft costs and there's contingencies because we don't really know all the, the pieces and parts. But our fees will be in there. We'll probably, because it's a public project in Massachusetts, we'll probably need an owner's project manager. Their numbers, I guess, add in here. So the idea is that this would cover-
So this proposal is phase two.
Yeah. What this would do is allow a contract to be ready to go if town meeting saw fit to pay, move ahead.
But you're saying that phase one is complete and obviously we have work to do before town meeting. Chris is going to continue to do work to, even though it's complete.
Yeah.
About charge as a bit of a, let's say, investment with getting the next order.
I'm here to help you guys make this successful.
Because you want the order. You're going to help us prepare that so we can get it fixed.
Definitely. Definitely.
So, I mean, he's invested in it too. And I think that's important to know that, you know, this is a project they're not just doing because they haven't paid. He believes it. I think every meeting we've seen so far, and like, like Chris said, he's been on this for three years. First time you came in with that grant program.
It's been a while.
So nobody understood it like EDM did. That was the big thing right there. So.
I might have emailed Becky 40 times in between 21 and 23. So she got sick of me after a while.
Wasn't going to say anything.
Do we get into most of that? Not this point.
I think we need to work on the warrant article. This is going to be, whether we decide it's going to be a capital exclusion, whether it's going to be a bond. Dick has talked before about this is something that can be carried inside the levy limit without requiring a vote. I don't know if we want to do that because it would tie up our levy limit in this project. So knowing what we know and the fact that the committee needs to go out and also do the selling job, if you will. You're making a case for the biggest project we've done in since the police station, basically.
Well, we did start. I don't know whether Bobby put an article in, into the paper.
Good art.
And, you know, working forward, yeah, we're going to continue to do that.
Page 19, last week in the Times.
But the reality is, this is the same cost as the police station adjusted for inflation. That was a $3 million building, how many years ago? Nine years ago. And that would be heck, more than that now.
Yeah.
Make the case. It'll go through. To be honest, and Rita will tell you this, the seniors have really asked for nothing in the 20 years they've had the building.
I think, I think though, what we also talked about is we need to have meetings, much like the fire department had to show public, public meetings to put forth something like this so that people see this before town meeting. If this is passed out at town meeting, they're going to go, well, why did you put bathrooms there? Well, why don't you have six bathrooms instead of two? You know, that sort of thing. And so I think that we wanted the support of the selectmen to have public forums to-
The community forum.
Yeah. We also talked about internally, from the standpoint of the committees that the town has currently planning. I guess we don't have a capital improvement anymore. But basically, we're looking to have a meeting of the people that plan our community and present it to them too. Because what we don't want to have happen is someone, say, from the master plan committee, stand up at town meeting and say, well, we didn't know too much about this. And I'm on the master planning committee. So in the next month or two, we're going to ask that we get a meeting together of pretty much a lot of committees and maybe the planning board and, and conservation commission. So they're, they have a knowledge in, upfront of this. But basically, town-
Well, I think the thing is, we want to avoid, and Don could probably speak to this, a bit of what he saw last week, where the steering committee, or whatever you want to call it, has been working for two years, going through hundreds of scenarios, coming up with the scenario. And then people have the information thing, hey, can we talk all about that again? Where you have a committee here that has spent dozens of hours working this over, looking at all the plans and how to express that so people don't stand up and say, oh, can I tell you, I'd like to have that bathroom over there a little bit? Look, we worked on that. We've done that. We need to make that clear so you're not, I would say, dragged down in the minutia of that type of thing.
Right.
We've got a vibrant committee here, great representation, and they work diligently to come up with the best plan. And that's it. We cannot go and pick out new wall color, basically move a wall at the town meeting. That will never get done. And that goes back to your point, more public info, more, more public forums to present it. You know, Bobby, what you put in the paper was great. And it's a good start.
Well, it was mostly him that wrote it.
No, my wife did.
Nice. Nice, Chris. Good job.
But again, that's only reaching the people that read the paper. So I think to your point, getting all the information out there.
Yeah. Actually, it went to the Times, the Reminder, and the Republican. So we got decent, decent coverage.
Did you get it in the scribe?
Good connections with the scribe.
Yes, we do.
Committee's going door to door next, right?
Thinking about it.
That's why you got Mike. He's the young one.
What, a point I'd like to make and kind of build off of what Gary was saying about getting all the committee together. I think all those committees should know just how much fundraising the Friends have done for this project. And I'm in the process of working on another pie sale. We did it a year and a half ago through RISEs. We sold 87 pies to the tune of five bucks profit per pie. And then some people just gave us a donation. But we're doing it again. And there's been so many other avenues where we have gone into fundraising mode. So I, I think it would be good, maybe if we could compile a lot of that.
Quickly, one thing that wasn't touched on, and I think, you know, we know about it from the initial survey, the parking lot. So back when we had the initial number of almost five, and there was the goldmine parking lot for almost, what, 1.9 in the initial quote. So what was the thought to share with the board of upgrading the parking lot?
So what we've discussed to date is just repaving it, cleaning it up, making it ADA accessible. And that's about it. We haven't done a new layout. We, as part of the study, we had reoriented it to make it, you know, senior-friendly and not have to cross passing lanes, like passing lanes. And there was a lot of thought that went into the new layout of it. But discussing with the committee, what we all landed on was, for this exercise, the parking lot would just get repaved, which we have a number for. That's not included in this.
Right.
But we have a number for it just as a, a small upgrade to the project.
Okay. Part of a plan you showed before showed another exit, I believe. In fact, we talked about the solar thing.
Yeah.
And the potential for later.
Yeah. I did a, a quick, down and dirty parking plan. And it looks like we could gain about 22 or 23 additional spaces by extending the parking lot towards Allen Street along the north property line. And there would be an exit only out of that point, which precipitated the EV issue with the transformer and all that. But, but that would be, you know, a cost, but not a substantial amount of cost to, to do this. Because again, basically, it's pretty small in, in square footage, but gives us 23 more spaces on-site. Because, you know, concerning if we have overflow parking, the only place to go is probably the Bethlehem Baptist Church, which is not the best place to have people crossing on Allen Street. But-
What was the resolution on the location of the EV charging stations?
Of, well, after bumping into the National Grid lady out there who was marking the pad based on their, their plan, I asked her to actually mark where I felt it would not be imposing on any additional parking plan that we were, were looking at, which she did do. And then I communicated to RISE engineer, Jerry Olivetti, that I had met the person out there and had moved the pad. And he was going to check with National Grid. He didn't see National Grid as being a problem because National Grid is paying everything from the pole to the path. But from the pad to the EV stations was going to be cost under the grant that Bob got for the EV stations. And by moving the pad to where I felt it was out of the way, it was about another 25 feet. There was conduit and extra wiring that may be involved. And he wasn't sure. Long story, on Friday, he called me and he said, don't worry about it. They're covering it under the grant. And that the pad's going to be located out of the way, basically, of-
So future expansion or-
Future expansion. And I also asked them to make sure that when they put it in, normal depth of, of electric conduit is around 24 inches for the EVs. I asked them to put it down 36 inches because if we start to the top of pipe and we start excavating for parking and that kind of stuff. And he said they'd put it on the plan. So all's well, that ends well. And the good thing about the expansion for, with the floor plan is we've got a cafe there that while these people, hordes of EV users are going to be sitting there, will be buying coffee and donuts at our cafe. So.
Sure. So the new location, is that up where the blue circle is?
Yeah. The, the four spaces that they're taking are right, yeah.
Right.
Where he's got them outlined. And if you scroll, scroll down, the pad is now going to be pretty much opposite that first island in, yep, right over there, right in there.
And that doesn't cut into where you're potentially-
We're going to be up on the north, north side. And they're extending, if you will, those two rows of parking on the north.
Okay. And then potentially an exit coming down along the, the north line.
North would go right out.
Right. Right angle to the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Or do we have Scantic Valley Artisans? Scantic Valley Artists?
Yeah. I don't think you can take it tonight.
So it's deferred to next week?
Yeah. I would just say that I don't really see an issue if it doesn't interfere with any useful use. However, I did mention before, we have sometimes had inquiries about asking for a license. And I would not be, I don't think it's ever been granted.
Did she respond to you about the, the alcohol?
They do not need a liquor permit. She did say that. An Irish song coming in, but she didn't get back in time.
I don't know what's happening at early September.
Yeah.
The primaries or anything like that.
Does it conflict the dates?
Am I on there?
Oh, you are here.
I, I didn't hear you.
No, you're there.
So our dates are September 13, 14, 15. The 13th is just a setup.
Right.
It's at night. September, and because normally we would be at the senior center, but they have something else going on. I'm Laura Salerno. Hi. Scantic River Artisans, in lieu of Nan.
Power behind the throne.
The power behind the throne, absolutely. So, and that's interesting to hear all of this. So that means we would need to find a new place for about a year for all of our shows.
All right. Honestly, if you worked it out with the school department parking wreck, the auditorium at Thornton Burgess is-
Very good.
Don, we went to that thing that the, that group called, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, sure.
Right. Yeah. We've got time. And it hasn't been okayed yet. So, hasn't gone through. So we'll, we'll deal with that as it happens. But for our event, it is the 13th, like a four to eight at night, just for us to set up. The 15, that's a 13. 14th is a Saturday. That's about a 12 to five, in and out, 12 to five, that's it. And then Sunday is 11 to three. And then we just have to break down at three.
The only issue I would speak to is, again, we know parking here is not great. And the Saturday, you have the library. I don't know what they're, I mean, during the day, sometimes you can't get a spot here. During the afternoon, I'm not quite sure how they are. But again, just even without them, parking here is not great. If you have a good crowd, we may see some issues.
Right.
That's the only thing to be concerned of.
Would there be any consideration using Thornton Burgess now for that event in September? Because you'd have more room, more parking. They just have to coordinate it with after hours after school on Friday.
And there's not going to be any change for next year, any of that.
Well, we, I would just have to probably talk with them about that. I know when I ran the Fall Festival, we ran into issues. So there's a, a pretty big chunk of change for that. Because we have to bring in a whole cleaning crew. It's on the weekend.
Usually Sunday. Saturday, they try and work around, okay, we have-
No, we had to do, we would have had to do that for Saturday. Anything after Friday. Which, Scantic River, I don't know that they have that, those funds.
Right. And that's the other question. I know that typically you had done a commission kind of thing with the senior center for covering costs. It wasn't rental per se. But I was told that a commission from sales covered some of the costs of using the senior center.
So, the Scantic River Artisans, they'd get a commission for running the event.
Right.
But as far as the Senior Center, we would just throw them money once a year.
Right, I'm saying, so you paid a fee, basically, to use the place.
Yes, yes.
And the question is, are we going to your quasi-town group? And honestly, a lot of local artists are displaced.
So not only is this going to be our regular show, but this is also the New England Mosaic show.
Do you think there's enough space here?
Yeah. They've had it before. I was just looking around at some of this stuff here. This talks about the mosaic. Send you that. They've had shows here before. So Nan seems to think that this is plenty of room. We have new panels. I mean, you, you were the judge last year, right?
Yep.
So you saw the jury show. It's just like that, except the mosaic panels, it's a twenty-four foot wall, four feet high. All of the tiles that are sold on that, all of that money goes to scholarships for high school kids. And I think we ended up giving like a $500 scholarship to someone at Minichog last year.
It's the mosaic plus your regular show, right?
Correct. So it's the, ours, they're all, you know, movable and-
Nan said she had those barriers.
Yeah. And we can create any shape we want with that, so.
But we also get back into, there's so much stuff inside this area already.
Right.
I really would like to, and I'm all in favor of using this place, but I think we really should explore a better way we can get them to use the gym at Thornburgess. It's a much better space. And if we can make, work with the school department to say, look, this is our town group here. How can we work out the cost? It's a better place for parking. It's a better place for display. You put that twenty-four foot thing in there, you can do more.
Would you be opposed to that, or would you have to go back to the Committee and ask?
I am not opposed to that.
It's about the money.
It's about the money.
Right.
Yeah. That's all.
Okay. I would like to say, you know, I'm in favor of this place, and I'd like to help them work towards the school as a prime location.
Right.
We got time, right?
Right.
So that's September, but we have to know. So unfortunately, all of the materials for the mosaic, because we partner with the Agawam Artist League, and all of the dates and everything have already gone out. So we just found out last week that we can no longer, or we can't use the Senior Center. So that was a major hiccup.
Oh, I don't see the dates being a problem with the school.
Sometimes they run basketball in the fall.
That early?
In the fall. September-ish.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that's kind of where we are.
You think you can do it in here?
Yes. We would just have to figure out some of this stuff.
There is a lot of stuff in here. Think about tables, chairs.
There's a lot of stuff in here, yeah. I mean, and there's no ramp to go to the stage or anything.
If it weren't for that.
Well, the mosaic actually is not that-
If you can hide those tiles over there, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, the mosaic could go right in front of something and hide whatever need be, but-
No, you never know.
It's not, it's not a great room at this-
The library might say, this is a great opportunity to partner with you, and they might do something.
Well, actually, the library, I talked to Ellen Moriarty already. She's thrilled. She did tiles last year. I'm bringing my box of tiles to hand out, the little canvases for everybody to do. This town actually was, out of all the towns that we send tiles to for the mosaic project, this library was the one that produced the most. So that was kind of exciting. She is actually excited to have it here, and she said if there was a fee, she wanted the library to pay for it. If there was a fee to be here in the town hall.
I would have no problem with them using this building, but I'd still like to explore possibly-
Absolutely.
Sure.
So for that, should we reach out to somebody, or how would that, what would that look like?
It would look better coming from you as the group, to the school committee and the school department.
Okay.
And, you know, seeing, hey, what we're going to do, this is what we're thinking. We have this facility, but what are our options for here? Just to get a rough idea.
Okay. Just to see what they have to say. Okay.
But again, I have no problem with this building. I've said in the past, I think we, it's underutilized at the beginning.
Right? We've got the space in this town. We need to utilize it more. Absolutely. All right, so that's, mine's easy. That's all we have.
Do we need a motion on that, or is that just coming as you please?
I don't think we need a motion yet, because we're going to explore the other things here.
Let us know what you're, what they say, and then we'll-
Okay. Okay. I'll just turn that over to Nan.
She's very persuasive.
Yes, isn't she? Well, I think she's trying to groom me to, so she can step back, and I'm like, wait.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And don't forget, we have another show coming up in June. The jury one is in June this year, September, and then November.
You working on that one?
I judged the last one.
Yeah. I don't think-
I think they'll probably change judges.
They try to change it up so that we don't kind of overstep our boundaries or-
And he knows our, like, you know-
Do you now?
There was some cool stuff last week.
We have a lot of our-
Oh my God, there was some fantastic stuff at the last. Yes. The metal? Yeah. But this last show we just had in February was phenomenal.
I'm just saying, he knew Rembrandt personally, so this is the guy you-
There we go.
We purchased a lot of art in Europe when we traveled.
Oh, very nice. Yeah. No, gorgeous stuff. A lot of photographers coming out, too. My son just entered. He put four photos in. He sold three of them.
Nice.
His first show, so that's pretty exciting. One was a praying mantis in this, the way he photographed it was really kind of cool. One was a sunset up at the golf course. And one was an old black and white photo of a broken down barn. Yeah. All completely different, but-
Nice.
Yeah.
Have you ever seen any of my stuff there?
I don't know that I have seen your stuff.
I had stuff in there years ago.
Years ago, right. And I'm new. I'm only a couple of years in. So, but come see the rest of it.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Mark, let me know that Snow and Ice was going to be overdrawn. I asked them to submit a letter to the Board.
Okay.
Just as a thing. Last year, it over drew in March. The year before, it over drew in January. So it's basically the storms. Exactly. Well, we've had a couple of, as he said, the weekend was to kill us. Exactly.
We have one on holiday, too.
I'll make a motion to approve the, I was superintendent, to spend the Snow and Ice account into the red.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
What color, vermilion?
It's mauve.
All right, warrant for presidential preference, Prime. We have to sign this?
Yes.
Okay, what I got here? I got it here. Greetings. Be the council.
Colored one, too. Nice. How many do we have to sign?
How many do we have to sign?
They didn't come back to me. I emailed her and asked, so.
We're signing all of them.
Right, there you go.
They just gave me each a copy.
City Council or Selectmen. Okay, so these three, I guess these three lines up here, right?
Which one are you doing, top?
That top or the top one?
I was the second. All right.
Second.
We don't have a TA report tonight. Selectmen reports.
Actually, you've pretty much heard everything. I had the Council on Agent Board meeting this morning, which the topic was getting that budget ready for tonight. And, you know, obviously, we have another meeting for the Building Committee next week. Planning, the big thing, obviously, they're getting ready for, you know, the start of the, the talk on Flendale Solar. It's going to be something for one.
Planning Committee, Matt, we had a forum. It was very interesting. You should watch the video on YouTube.
Half the video.
But you can't. Yeah, you can't. But I believe it should be available if you still have cable. Those twenty-seven people that still have cable.
Wilberham Cable access.
Right. One ninety-two, three, and two and three and four, whatever. One, two and three?
On all cable.
I think it's one.
Is this, is this?
That's a suggestion. So, come back with-
What do you got?
I got nothing to report.
Okay. We're, I entertain a motion that we go into executive session, not to return to regular session, to discuss collective bargaining with the police union. I've determined that to discuss it in public session would jeopardize the position of the Board.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
John Flann, I.
Donald, I.
Gregory, I.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.